We're going to go ahead and go into closed session. Mr. Hensley, do you have a motion?
(laughing) Yes, sir.
Well, let me ask this. Do you make the motion that we approve the motion as outlined for the closed session, which is contained in the amended agenda?
Yes, I make a motion that we move to approve the motion to go into closed session for the reasons stated in the revised agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to close session at this point. We will be back at 5:30 to begin our regular session.
Yes, we don't have to read that.[553.79][553.79](end of transcript)
Okay. Okay, welcome everyone. The Moore County Board of Education is now in session. First of all, we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Chair, you need a motion to come out of closed session?
Oh, what was that?
You need a motion to come out of closed session.
We simply, we simply took a recess from closed session.
Okay, but you need a motion to come back into open session.
Okay. All right. Do we, do we have a motion to come back into open session? So moved as a second?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the eyes have it.
Very satisfied, Mr. Schwartz? Thank you.
All right, we're now, we're now in open session. At any rate, yes, okay, here we go. Here we go. Yes, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. For the Pledge of Allegiance, do we have someone to sign for that?
Yes.
Okay, yes, come on forward.
Good evening, Dr. Locklear, Board Chair Levy and Board members. I am presenting to you two fabulous Falcons tonight. Jaleel Mobley will be doing the Pledge of Allegiance and Gabby Coles will be giving the inspiration.
Okay, thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. You may now be seated. I'm just gonna get right into it. As Angela Lee Duckworth said, grit is passion and perseverance for long-term goals. Grit is having stamina, grit is sticking with your future day in and day out, not just for the week, not just for the month, but for years, and working really hard to make that future reality. Grit is living life like it's a marathon and not a sprint. Grit is showing up when you are tired. Grit is something we all need to acquire. Here are some ways you can show grit. Having courage, developing focus and perseverance, having resilience and having passion. You may ask yourself, why is it so important to have grit? Well, grit is a combination of passion and perseverance. Without passion, perseverance leads to burnout and without perseverance, we simply give up. And when I got to middle school, it was that wacky COVID year and I simply had no grit at all. I was shy and I didn't like this school as much as I love it now and it was especially hard because we had the virtual two days and I was only in-person classes for two days of the week. It was hard to socialize and it made me struggle with that in the future. And then we came back to normal school and life changed for the better, not instantly, but eventually. Being in school five days a week provides opportunities to participate in hands-on activities and having better communication and feedback from my teachers to improve my learning. And I showed grit and changed my, and changed by branching out and socializing with my peers better than ever. And I love school and I keep my grades up and I play sports without being as scared of failure as I used to be and I'm just overall a better person. Being back at school has increased my focus and helped me learn better overall. Being back at school has helped me pursue my passions of sports and many other clubs. The school has helped me branch out by being selected to involve in my schools JS2S and Beta Club. In fact, in July, I went to Washington DC for JS2S and was able to learn valuable lessons about things that are very helpful in developing me as a person. JS2S has helped me to be a better leader and reach out to my classmates whether new or not and make them feel comfortable in my school. And I also take Math 1 at the high school, which was a very big step for me because I'm not really good at branching out. So that was also how I showed grit. But I just want you to remember that grit gives people mental toughness that enables them to persist and even succeed when facing adversity.
We got it?
So while the chair is returning to his seat, we'll take a moment of silence and I'd ask that everyone keep in mind today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so everyone please keep in your thoughts, those, our school resource officers and other law enforcement professionals throughout the county who help keep us and our families safe. And also, everyone will notice that Board Member Davis is not here. She had a serious family emergency, so please keep Ms. Davis and her family in your thoughts. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to our Vice Chairman. Okay, at this point, we have some recognitions. They're going to be read by Board Member Ken Benway and Mr. Holmes and I will go up front and give our congratulations. Okay, so why don't we do that?
Amanda Falk, please join Board Chair Levy and Board Member Holmes at the front. Amanda Falk is this month's Engage, Inspire, Succeed Certified Staff Honoree. Mrs. Falk established herself as an essential part of Aberdeen Elementary's community upon joining us last school year. Students and families recognize her as a reliable resource for support in almost every area of their lives. She has high expectations for students in both their achievement and behavior goals and works tirelessly to remove barriers that impede their progress. Mrs. Falk leads the student support team's efforts in developing and implementing tiered behavior interventions and administering modifications and accommodations to transform the way discipline support is executed. Her data-driven approach has provided students with a problem-solving process to help them successfully navigate conflicts with others. Mrs. Falk's career as a, as a mental health practitioner makes her someone whose skill, skill set is sought after, sought after by various members of the school community to help resolve some of the most pressing and urgent problems. She's a gift to Aberdeen Elementary School. Would members of the Falk family and principal Poole please stand and be recognized? Congratulations, Amanda. Congratulations, Amanda. Brenda Manis, please join Board Chair Levy and Board Member Holmes at the front. Brenda Manis is this month's Engage, Inspire, Succeed Staff Honoree. Over the past nineteen years, Mrs. Manis has served as a cafeteria worker at Elise Middle and Robbins Elementary and has been the bookkeeper and front office receptionist at High Falls Elementary since 2018. Mrs. Brenda, as our staff and students call her, does all of her bookkeeping duties extremely well and always on time. Since High Falls Elementary is a K through eight grade school, Mrs. Brenda works with ninth grade levels, multiple school accounts and a host of clubs and teams, all of their, and all of their finances. She's instrumental in planning and preparing for our yearly fall festival, our spring fling, and also coordinates celebrations for our staff members as part of our social committee. What sets Mrs. Brenda apart is her unconditional warmth and cheerfulness and her commitment to helping every student, staff member, parent and guest in any way she can. Would members of the Manis family and Principal Moore please stand and be recognized? Congratulations. Isabella Garcia, please join Board Member, Board Chair Levy and Board Member Holmes at the front. Isabella Garcia is this month's Engage, Inspire, Succeed Student Honoree. Isabella Garcia is a junior at Union Pines High School and currently ranks in the top three percent academically of her junior class of three hundred and six students. Isabella is a core leader in our student to student program. She attended the Military Child Education Coalition National Training Seminar in Washington, DC last summer as one, and was one of only ten S2S students selected to attend the Francis Hesselbein Student Leadership Program at West Point this past fall. Isabella was also nominated for the Military Child of the Year Award and is currently a semifinalist for the Air Force 2023 Military Child of the Year Award. Isabella is an active member and officer of the Leo Club, a member of the National Honor Society and has been a three-year member of the varsity softball team as well as a member of a travel team. She currently shows our school and community what it means to be, to be Viking strong. Would members of the Garcia family and Assistant Principal Sovey please stand and be recognized? Congratulations. At this point, we have several additional recognitions. Zach Gilbertson, please join Board Chair Levy and Board Member Holmes at the front. Over the past four years, Zach has displayed a great deal of grit and determination, which paid off at his, at this year's cross-country state championship held at the Ivy Redmond Sports Complex in Kernersville, North Carolina.
I should be up there.
Zach, Zach took first place after finishing just two seconds ahead of the competition for a time of fifteen minutes and twenty-eight seconds. He became the first male cross-country runner to win a state championship at Pinehurst since Jeff Moody, who won in nineteen seventy-three and seventy-four. Would members of the Gilbertson family and Principal Phillips please stand and be recognized? Congratulations, Zach. Julia Hurstberg, Caitlin Krusick, Kitson O'Neal, Camelia Porras and Bibi Rujiranan, please join Board Chair Levy and Board Member Holmes at the front.
Ju- Julia?
The Pinecrest Girls Golf Team erased a four-stroke deficit in the final round to secure its fifth state title and first since 2019. Julia Hurstberg, Caitlin Krusick, Kitson O'Neal, Camila Porras and Bibi Rujiranan finished with a team two, two-round total of four hundred and sixty-seven strokes, two strokes better than second-place Myers Pike Park High School. The team remained calm and focused on the final round while, while persevering to win the state championship. Would members of the golf team families and Principal Phillips, please stand and be recognized? Congratulations, people.
You want the coach? Hey Bob?
Oh yeah.
Want the coach up there?
Tell you what, we'll step out in the picture and give them, give them a nice picture altogether.
There we go, hey, hey.
This worked, John.
Members of the Pinecrest High School Cheerleading Team, please join Board Chair Levy and Board Member Holmes at the front.
Coaches too, please. Coaches?
And you need to cheer after you're done.
There we go.
Non-tumbling chair.
The Pinehurst Cheerleading Team began its journey to the state championship by first winning the Sandhills Athletic Conference Cheerleading Invitational in November. In early December, the team competed against the best cheerleading squads from across the stra- the state and went on to win the D1 Large Varsity Non-Tumble State Championship. We are so proud of the effort everyone put in throughout the year and coming away as state champions is a pure testament of what can happen when everyone works together to accomplish a common goal. Would members of the cheerleading team families and Principal Phillips, please stand and be recognized? Congratulations.
We should've just went to Pinecrest, rather than bring Pinecrest here.
Angela Vasek, please join, join Board Chair Levy and Board Member Holmes at the front. Angela Vasek is this month's Engage, Inspire, Succeed Volunteer Honoree. We are so excited to recognize Mrs. Vasek for her continuous volunteer support to Crane's Creek Middle School. She is active in the classrooms, supports various learning activities and assists teachers with setting up labs. Mrs. Vasek has also volunteered with staff members in the Parent, Teacher, Student Association to support school socials and the fall festival. Her active participation in our last school improvement team meeting, as well as recent parent and community information sessions, has been focused on the positives and has been solution-oriented, and has been solution-oriented. Mrs. Vasek's voice and contributions to Crane's Creek Middle have made considerable impacts to our students, staff and stu- and school community. Thank you for all you have done and continue to do to support our Falcons. Would members of the Vasek family and Principal Jones please stand and be recognized? Noel Morris, Nolan Cuevas, Taylor Brown and Ally Williamson, please join Board Chair Levy and Board Member Holmes at the front.
Just hold, hold on for a second. Let's get everybody's, Nolan? Nolan, right? And out, right? This goes to Nolan?
The following individuals were selected as this year's holiday card winners. For our elementary school winners, we have Noel Morris from Sandhills Farm Life Elementary and Nolan Cuevas from High Falls Elementary. For our middle school winner, we have Taylor Brown from High Falls, High Falls Elementary. For our high school winners, we have Ally Williamson from Union Pines High and Elena Churchill from Pinecrest High. Elena was unable to attend tonight's meeting, but Principal Phillips will present her certificate on behalf of the Board of Education at a later date. Would members of the Morris, Cuevas, Brown and William, Williamson families and Principal McPherson, Principal Moore, Principal Phillips and Assistant Principal Sovey, please stand and be recognized? Congratulations to you all.
Let's see your card. You guys get your card?
That's awesome.
You guys get your card?
Awesome, great. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes the recognition portion of tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Before we proceed with the program highlight, we'll take a few moments for those who were just here for the award ceremony. If you want to depart, please feel free to leave.
And thank you to all of our honorees. We're indeed proud to have you here at Moore County Schools.
This was definitely a hall of champions tonight. Thank you.
No question about it. Okay, I don't see the public address here, but it needs to be written and I don't see the public address in here. Right there. That's it?
After the consent.
After, after the consent agenda, okay, all right. No, no, that I know.
I think we have to make a motion to approve it, right?
We do, well, we do, but that makes this fairly easy. Okay.
You guys can come on up and don't be shy.
Yes, yes, please, please, come on up, come on forward.
This isn't church.
Your chicken sandwich is over there.
There's a media table right over there.
Courtesy, courtesy of Mr. Hetzling. At, at this point in time, I believe we have program highlights and I'll turn it over to Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wow, what a great night of recognitions. So much excellence represented in our school district. So proud of those students. We now have, our program highlight for this month is a recurring theme. We're kind of taking through a couple of different topics. This month is, you know, we can do that in Moore County Schools and that's by preparing our students for college. We're invested and believe that whether it's college, whether it's enlistment, whether it's a career, all of those are equal honorable pursuits. That's a core belief of our school district and this is one of the things that we do. We think we do a very good job of preparing our students for it. So we have Ms. Donna Gephardt, our Director for Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Tracy Metcalf, our Director for Student Support Services, and one of our great counselors, Josh Newton from Pinecrest High School, who does a lot of work also with our CCP program. So I'm gonna turn it over to Donna.
Good evening. Chair Levy, Dr. Locklear. It was a pause there. And members of the board, we are so excited tonight to offer this presentation and perspective. As Dr. Locklear mentioned, we've sort of taken an aspect of, we can do this, and last month you saw the great things that we do to help prepare for military. This month is very pointed because next month, we're bringing to you the high school course guide, that will be the twenty-three, twenty-four high school course guide. So it is about what we do to help our kids get ready for college. So Moore County can definitely do that. And as we think through all the great things, whether it be military, career or the, or college, all of that happens because of a course guide and these great counselors that we have in Moore County Schools, working with our students, because that is our bottom line, is supporting our students to make sure their dreams come true. We do want to just share this with you. This is in implementation stage. It was starting implementation of actually January 2023. This will be a year where DPI has been with focus groups and are now looking at, these are the things that DPI has set are the portrait of a graduate. So this is about the aspects and the, the skills that folks need to be, whether it's college, career or military-ready. They've spent a lot of work on this and I think you, one of the things I would say I'm very proud of with Moore County Schools is when you go in our classrooms, you're going to see critical thinking. You're going to see us really looking at collaboration and having those collaborative opportunities. You're going to see us working with kids to be flexible thinkers. I love the young lady up here talking about grit, because one of the things you heard her talk about is that flexible thinking and that sometimes fear of failure that she had to overcome. So these are the things that a DPI, DPI has put together as a portrait of a graduate that I think Moore County Schools can be very proud of, that we do incredibly well. We're using the college term for today's presentation as being a two-year or four-year university, so either looking at institutions, so either looking at Sandhills Community College or four-year, a four-year institution. So to get ready, and this is the critical piece, for us to get ready for these students for college, it doesn't start at the high school. It starts down in that kindergarten classroom where we're really teaching them those basic skills. But as they move through Moore County Schools, I am very proud to say that our high school does a great job at counseling our kids and providing lots of offerings. We have standards-level coursework, we have honors classes, we have advanced placements. I will tell you, there are thirty-eight advanced placement courses that can be offered through College Board. Moore County has the availability for twenty-nine of those for our students that give them college credit if they make a certain score on an assessment. And of course, our strong relationship with Sandhills Community College with our career and college promise, we are very proud of that connection and that support that we have. So I'm gonna let the person, oh, I do want to mention this, the, we also have the career and technical college certificates. I was very excited as Josh was talking to me, he said, you know, we have pharmaceutical tech. I thought, where were these when I was coming through Union Pines High School? So we have a lot of that connection with Sandhills Community College, that we have lots of offerings to get, to give our kids certificates in college, to have them certificate in college and career-ready. But I think now the most important piece is Josh talking about a counselor's perspective and what he does every day for our children.
Thank you. I liked the introduction where you talked about the great and how great I was and all that. I didn't like the part where you said, this is the most important part, because now I feel a little more extra pressure. But when I thought about the perspective and being able to explain what a counselor's perspective would be like when, when offering support for, for college admittance, I tried to come up with maybe like a mini timeline of, of things that we needed to do for students. And in doing that, goal-setting was probably one of the first things that, that come up. And that, that can be done through individual meetings and those start really, obviously, like she said, down at the younger, younger grade levels, but at the high school level, it's a lot of. But at the high school level, it's a lot of, you know, what is it that you want to do when you leave here? You know, and making sure that students are aware of what they can do when they leave here. So a lot of, you know, I always call it, you know, creating options, making sure that they know what their options are. And the options, you know, obviously, we're talking about tonight as college, but that could be military, it could be workforce, and making sure that we're educating and making them aware of what goals that they could have. And once they have a goal, now we're building on the academic piece. You know, we're trying to build the four-year plans, we're trying to make sure that they're aware of what the options that we do offer are that can match those goals that we just talked about setting. So it's about the academic planning. Some of that happens with the student individually, some of it is behind the scenes. You know, counselors are going to work on graduation checks twice a year, at least, to make sure that students are in the right classes. But a lot of it's working with students, doing college searches, or making sure that they're aware of what tests they might need to be taking. So things like ASVAB, I think, is the next test we have coming up at Pinecrest, or signing up for the SAT or ACT. So things like that to help them be aware of the options, help them be aware to make sure that those academic four-year plans are matching the goals that we talked about setting. And then you kind of end the process late in our high school year with their, you know, junior into senior year, where we're talking about helping those students with their college applications. Whether those are scholarship applications, whether those are admittance applications, whether that's the FAFSA form, letters of recommendation, those kinds of things sum up, hopefully, their plan, where they've set a goal, where you help develop the curriculum toward what their goal is, and then help them accomplish that goal. All the while, one of the big things that counselors are doing is to help, I don't want to say eliminate, but help students progress through whatever the barriers are that they're facing. So if they have a goal, if they have the academic plan, that's great, but they're also facing different barriers that we have to help them come through. So that could be things like academic issues, so if we're talking about grades and attendance, could be relationship issues, students having a problem with another student, students having a problem with a teacher, students having a problem with a family member, dealing with any of those things that are getting in the way of helping them get to where they want to be. So I thought that was, hopefully, a way to sum up and give a counselor perspective on how we can support our students for college readiness.
Awesome.
And as you see, he has, he and his counselor partners have a lot, lot to be proud of. My Future NC looked at our CCP in comparison to peer counties that are other rural counties with similar demographics to Moore County, and you can see that we have, we are at 61% of our students participate in CCP classes. And I did put on there, because I am incredibly proud of this, and this is hard work on our counselors and our students, for five of them to graduate not only from high school, but to also graduate with an associate degree. The other piece that I am incredibly excited about is the advanced placement participation, and this is something the counselors really sit down. We offer AP coursework to ninth graders, so we go down as low as ninth grade. Ninth grade kids come in, and if they've got a college perspective, Josh, them, start guiding them into that high school advanced placement opportunity. And we're incredibly proud that we had 127 AP scholars. Tracy's gonna finalize and pull everything together, but I will tell you, regardless of military, career, or college, we are on this. So Tracy, follow it home.
My part's real easy. My Future NC is an organization that provides a snapshot of each county and its preparation of students for the future. They indicate that 84% of graduates reported intentions to enroll in a post-secondary institution here versus 69% in our peer counties. 62% of graduates enrolled in a post-secondary institution within 12 months versus 50% in peer counties. And so we are confident and saying, this is right. How do we do this, Donna?
Next, other side.
Other one.
Nope, that one.
I did that one. If you're interested in going to college and you're a student in Moore County Schools, we can help you do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the team. Just one, just one second. I wanted to thank you very much, but I also wanted to make sure that we emphasize, if you take the proper courses at Sand Hills and you want to go to college, what is the cost of Sand Hills College?
So just make sure I'm on camera so everybody gets to hear this.
Yes, I want you to say that, yes, please.
It can be free. The Sand Hills, the Sand Hills Community College has a great partnership with us, and with the Sand Hills Promise Scholarship, as long as our students in Moore County Schools take at least four CCP courses while they're in high school, Sand Hills is offering a two-year scholarship called the Sand Hills Promise Scholarship that will allow our students to finish whatever degree they've started in high school, or even start a new degree that they want to start to begin with. So for two years, tuition and fees are paid for. So the only thing a student could pay for after they graduate from us would be books. And that's obviously a great opportunity and a great partnership deal with Sand Hills.
So in Moore County, first two years of college can be free, and that, I think, is important. And to secondly, say our, what we say is employment, enrollment, or enlistment, those are the goals of Moore County Schools. So I want to thank you very much for all you're doing. Thank you. So we're moving right along. Let's go ahead for the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda is adopted. Let me turn it over to the Vice Chair for our public address.
So this evening, we have three public speakers. The first public speaker is Ms. Amy Dahl. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Well, I came here tonight to, I'm sorry, Chairman Levy, Dr. Locklear, members of the board, good evening. I came here to talk about school letter grades. Some things have said about, been said about school letter grades and a desire to help schools bring up those letter grades. And I think a lot of members of the public don't, basically what I want to do is urge the board to be clear with the public, when you propose or enact a policy that is designed to affect school letter grades, how that's going to happen. And so I wanted to talk just briefly about how those grades are constructed, because I know there are a lot of members of the public who may not know this. So I teach in high school, Northmore High School, and I was super proud watching that presentation, because all that stuff is so true of what goes on at Northmore. And I'm really proud of my colleagues and the kids there. But let me find this. Interestingly enough, there is a change afoot in the way the school letter grades are constructed. And so if the board proposes policies, we would, you know, love to hear whether it's going to connect with the current, the current structure or the future structure. The current structure at the high school level is based on the high-stakes tests. Specifically, at the high school level, 80% of the grade is based on what's called achievement as measured with on five tests, I think, biology, EOC, English II, math I, math III, and then the combination ACT and ACT work keys. And to get a little bit more into the weeds of how this is constructed, they create an index, and the index has a numerator and it has a denominator. The denominator is the sum of all students who take each test summed together. The numerator is all students who reach the standard on each test summed together. So to bring up that index, we basically need to get more students to meet the standard. I can see I'm getting really short on time. I would love to hear if you're going to propose something in keeping with that existing standard, how we're going to get more students across the line. That's something we try to do every day, all the time in the high school. Now, the new standard is, they're working on it, they want to roll it out in, they want to pilot it next year, 23-24. They want to roll it out in 2024, and I can see I'm going to run out of time. So I'm just going to say that it is predicated upon that portrait of a graduate, which they described to you, and those durable skills, collaboration, critical thinking, communication, and so forth. I guess I'm out of time.
That's okay.
I would say, if you have it written, I would love an email of it, if you wrote it down at all, unless it's in your memory. It might be in your memory.
I'm extemporizing, but I can write it down.
That would be great, just to have it.
I will email, and I'll copy everybody if you like.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That would be fine, because what you've said here is very elucidating, so we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's what I was going to say, the three minutes goes quick, and please, I mean, this is a good topic that I'm sure we're all interested in. Next up is Ms. Amber Strickland.
Yes.
Yes, go for it.
My name is Amber Strickland. I have two children that I love, support, and provide for. I am responsible for them and will do anything I can to ensure their safety, well-being, and the bright futures that they deserve. My oldest son is 20. He was diagnosed with autism and ADD at a very early age, and two summers ago, he suddenly developed a history of seizures. These obstacles were far from any choice I would have made for my child. It was mentally and emotionally challenging at times, but we worked through it, and in the end, my son prevailed. He earned his diploma from Union Pines High School this past June. My five-year-old started kindergarten this past September at Vass Lakeview Elementary. I had a feeling he would be unusually sick, as he has never been to school or daycare and grew up during a pandemic, but nothing could have prepared me for what we have had to face so far. He has been sick nine times since September the 1st, and is scheduled for surgery to get his tonsils and adenoids removed to kind of alleviate February the 3rd. Again, I did not choose this for my child, but we are working through it, and hopefully he will finish his kindergarten year strong. Within the first few months of my youngest starting school, he came home and told me about having to practice hiding from the bad guys. My heart sank, and it made me sick to my stomach to think that our children are having to deal with these issues. I guess I am also glad in a sense that Moore County Schools are taking precautions and educate, excuse me, educating students and staff on safety measures against threat, outside threats. But can the same thing be said about possible threats from inside the school? As it pertains to Cranes Creek Middle School, it seems like the number of daily fights continue to grow. We are losing good teachers due to a hostile work environment, and children, and the only vocabulary these children seem to be picking up are from the steady stream of obscenities and threats directed at staff and each other. Children, and from what I hear, when children are even allowed to use the restroom, they are possibly being exposed to facilities that are less than sanitary. Maggots. You, the school board, have a choice, and quite frankly, it's an important one. Either you continue to let someone who is supposed to be a lead educator set a bad example for MCS, who is clearly not concerned about before filling the role, or get somebody in there who will accept the responsibility, has grit, if you will. Take action now, invoke change before it's too late.
Thank you, Ms. Strickland.
Thank you.
Last but not least, is Sheri Locklear.
My name is Sheri Breedenberg. I'm not going to try to bust y'all's chops. I know there's a couple of y'all that's new on the seats. So I'm gonna give you a little break, but I was, I'm concerned about these schools. I really am, with the safety of the kids. And yes, I heard y'all's meeting today, and y'all hit a couple of things that I was actually going to speak about, which was the cameras was one of them. And some of the teachers says they don't want to be watched all the time, and I understand that, but if they ain't doing nothing wrong, it shouldn't matter anyway. But if you can turn your cameras to faces to students and put the desk over where the cameras at, you won't see them. But anyway, that's an, I, that's an issue on down the road. But when it comes to Ms. Jones, there is so many upset parents and students. In my knowledge, and I'm pretty sure in y'all's knowledge, she has failed the parents and the students. And I know y'all have these protocols and these contracts and stuff like that for her, but look, tell me she ain't broke her bridge of contract somewhere. But she says, instead of moving her to, there was things saying that they're just going to move her to another school as a principal. If she can't handle a middle school now, what's next? We got to think about all kids, not just one school, and I'm not saying, putting no one down. It's in all the schools. It really is. But Ms. Jones, she's bound to be failed these contracts or however. But there's only, there's two ways to skin a cat. I don't know how it works. But can you not take and make her a teacher? I mean, she spent, I think, nine or 10 years at Pinecrest High School as an English teacher. Lord knows, we need teachers. But anyway, another thing, like I said, y'all spoke a little bit about it, the VO Techs and the agriculture, bringing them back to our schools. I think it's an excellent idea. I had already been thinking about it, and I was also thinking, well, the students can also help rebuild and modify the schools. Instead of building houses, they could help out on the schools. That would help us out. And then as far as the landscape go, they can keep the maintenance up on it and stuff like that. But like I said, I'm just here, I'm not going to bust all of these chops at one time. But my problem is the safety of these kids. That's my number one thing, is the safety of our kids and the staff, don't get me wrong. But those cameras, I think, would be an excellent ideal. Even if they put them in there, if we have an outside attacker, you got those cameras. You can say, what room is in, what hall is in, especially when it comes to a big Pinecrest High School. We need that kind of source. My time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And just one, one quick point. I know that student discipline and the safety of our faculty, staff, and students is foremost on a lot of people's minds. Rest assured that that is also foremost on the school board's mind and the superintendent's mind, and we are in fact using the full spectrum of tools available to us to restore discipline and respect in our schools.
Okay. All right, moving, moving right along. Our first board action deals with the fiscal year budget resolution for the first quarter. Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Edmonds, I'll ask her to come up front, just in case there's any follow-up questions from the presentation this morning. Again, this is, this is denoting the changes that's taken place in the school district's budget, additional funds that may have been allotted into our budgets, et cetera, since it was originally loaded in October. And so this is the first quarter budget resolution, and I do recommend the board moves forward with approval. And I know we had some questions this morning, want to dive into some deeper discussions on some specific topics, and I think those would be some areas I might recommend that we dive deep in with our Budget Finance and Audit Committee. So turn it over to see if there's any additional discussion and questions.
Any comments or questions, Mr. Hensley, I believe you?
I do.
Have an amendment or either a question or something like that?
I have some discussion on this. First, I want to thank Ms. Edmonds for the work that she did in preparation of this budget resolution. I have to say, and I'm going to hold these two documents up, so everyone knows what I'm talking about, the budget resolution or the modified budget resolution is straightforward and pretty standard accounting, but what I was especially impressed about Ms. Edmonds' is a new returnee to Moore County Schools. But the supporting documentation gave me and the rest of the board unprecedented clarity as to actually what those differences were, and it was concise, and it was easy to understand. So I thank you for your work. It was, it really was exceptional. I do, after thinking about it, we talked about it this morning in the work session, and I do want to make one recommended change, or one recommend, I want to make one recommendation to the board, and this is a recommendation that I'm going to make, and I think that when we hear the superintendent's perspective, maybe Ms. Edmonds' perspective, and the rest of the board, but if I But if I understand this correctly, Moore County schools, we ended up, you know, we have our projected budget that we did way back when. And then in October, we did a revised projected budget. And then our actual revenue came in about $1.2 million above our projected revenue, our state revenue. Is that a fair assessment? So far, am I doing well so far? Yeah. So just so everyone knows, we projected $93 million in state revenue. And in fact, we got, well, we expected 90, we projected 93.1 million, and then we ended up getting 94.3 million, which is a $1.2 million increase. That is good news, so far, so good. However, this budget, however, there's one caveat to this budget resolution. And that is, in order to decompress the classified staff salary, you know, classified staff wage scale, and to hire an additional counselor for Cranes Creek to kind of help address the situation out there. Actually, it wasn't even an additional counselor, it was a full-time counselor, which they never had, correct? So in order to do those two things, the...
Additional full-time. Additional full-time.
Okay. But in order to do those two things, this school board did something that you really should never do. And that is, we dipped into our reserve fund in order to fund current operations. That reserve fund or fund balance is there for emergencies. And if you're gonna use it, is there in case of emergency, break glass and, you know, emergencies only. And by the way, you should never pay recurring costs such as classified staff salary raises and a new permanent position out of one-time funds. So this school board, gosh, four months ago, five months ago, when we implemented that, you know, we had a lot of discussion. It was a bitter pill to choose, but, you know, we ultimately decided that, you know, getting our classified staff where they needed to be, coupled with the need for a counselor at Cranes Creek, was important enough to, you know, break the glass and pull out the emergency lever. So that's a long-winded way of saying, if you look at this budget resolution, excuse me. If you look at this budget resolution, it reflects the $1.2 million increase. And then you look down and you see the $1.7 million coming out of fund balance. You can't see it on the screen, it's on the document in front of me. But rather than, rather than take that $1.2 million and say, okay, we're gonna put it back on the shelf, and we're gonna put it back in our emergency fund, rather than do that, I think it's fiscally irresponsible. What this recommendation is, is it said, we're gonna spend that $1.2 million. And I'm unclear as to what we're gonna spend that $1.2 million on. Unless I missed it, it's undefined. So basically, my recommendation to the board, and what I would want to discuss, is that rather than taking that $1.2 million gain, that we display fiscal discipline and fiscal responsibility, and we put it back in our fund balance. Rather than, and reduce the amount that we're digging into our fund balance, we keep that back in our emergency reserve. And then, rather than just rote-ly give the administration $1.2 million to spend, that's not to say that if a project comes up, or we need something for that $1.2 million, the superintendent cannot come to us and say, hey, you know, we've got a $4 million or $3.7 million fund balance. Here's what I'd like to spend it on, but I just don't want to give a blank check. So in the name of fiscal responsibility and fiscal discipline, I recommend, rather than authorizing additional spending in both services, in instructional services and support services, that we have that, we put that money back into fund balance. So that is my proposal.
Okay, is that, okay, is that in the form of a motion?
It is not, but if you would like to, I can make that in a motion if you want to do that.
Well, let's, I'll tell you what, let's first hear from other members of the board, and then we'll see about being in a motion. And maybe Dr. Locklear has a comment, yes?
Yes, sir. Normally, I would agree with you 100%. I'm not a proponent of spending fund balance on recurring costs either. I'm a proponent of spending on one-time costs. That's not a recurring cost. So I think, I agree with you. What I would say, that's, and Tina, please chime in. What I would say about the additional allotment that we got in state is that it is tied to specific funding and its specific programs, and not something that we can supplant or move around and then glean savings on the local side. And so that's where it's coming from. And because of that, I would say that I would not support what you're recommending. We have 189, if we look on that page under Fund 1, and we look at where the increases are coming from, 189,000 in career tech ed, that has to be spent on career tech ed. We can't transfer that. School technology is spent, O15 has to be spent on school technology and the various needs that we have there. Some of the other big items, for example, EC, we have a couple of different places where we're getting some EC funding. Some of the, a couple of big allotments there, we do have a school safety grant. Much of that, we're already planning to have, but we did get the expansion of two additional school resource officers. And that's not only for school resource officers, but also for some equipment, and also for some training for staff. Then we've got school connectivity, which is supporting the cost that goes along with that. Kent can talk about that more if we need to. And then we have 234,000 in literacy intervention, which is that required state training. And they're just loading that into our budget to support that required state training by state law, the letters training. So I understand what you're saying 100%, support that practice. That if you ever have additional revenue source from federal or state funds, how do we save our local revenue source for a rainy day, so to speak? I support that 100%. In this instance, though, this additional, these additional allotments are very tied to specific things that are in our budget. So it would be very difficult to do that. Now, that's not saying, at the end of the day, when we're doing our year-end closeout, and Ms. Edmonds is gonna do everything she can to get every bit of blood out of the state turnout we can get, and move around things as we do that year-end closeout to save as much local funds as possible. And that's the normal process that we go through. But at this point, I still recommend that the board approve this, and we can continue to dive into more details and more details as we might want in committee and bring back reports, if the board would like to see that.
Let me ask you a question, Dr. Locklear. The money that this $1.2 million is all about, is that already allotted from the general revenues? Do you understand my question?
Actually, can I restate your question?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
So we kind of hit on this this morning in the work session. Actually, we didn't kind of hit on this, we discussed this directly. One half, one half of the one-point additional, two-point, of the additional $1.2 million that we, that extra that we got, one half of that is a $618,000 grant for school resource officers that we've already budgeted for with other money. So what happens, and it's important that everyone understands this. I budgeted to buy this Coke from Chick-fil-A, right? And this Coke from Chick-fil-A cost me $3. My wife gives me $3 to buy this Coke. So I end up with $6, but I've already paid for this Coke. So really, it's the same analogy, except we've already budgeted, and we already have $618,000 set aside for those school resource officers out of existing money. Then we get a grant for $618,000. So what the superintendent is telling you is that that $618,000 must go to school resource officers, which that's probably true. But when you take that $618,000 and you apply it to school resource officers, that frees up the $618,000 that we already budgeted and allocated for school resource officers. And what I'm saying is, we have a gift in that we got an extra $618,000 in this case. And then we can take that existing $618,000 that we already budgeted for existing SROs. These are not additional SROs, because those additional SROs are not hired yet, and they're not trained yet. So what I am saying is that this $618,000 that we must, we must spend on school resource officers, that is replacing an existing $618,000. What the superintendent wants to do is he wants to take that $618,000 and give it to himself for budget authority to plan on spending for operations or whatever it's called, physical plan. Where I'm saying that we need to put that back on the shelf, because here's another point. Earlier today, our CPA was sitting right here, and both in his report and verbally, he warned us. He warned us that you guys are operating, like most other school systems, you are operating on juiced-up ESAR funds and COVID money that's gonna end at the end of this fiscal year and next fiscal year. Now is the time to be fiscally responsible, you know, make hay while the sun is shining, put money back, and then exercise fiscal responsibility now. Because when we gotta make the difficult budget choices that our CPA warned us about next year and the year after, that we have some reserves to cover that. So, well, and so let me say one, let me say one thing. So out of this $1.2 million, there is probably some amount of it that has not already been programmed, like this $618,000 for SROs has already been programmed. I don't know whether that's $50,000 or $100,000 or $200,000. I know that at least half of it is supplanting existing money. So if the board isn't going to, you know, if we want to go down this path of, well, some of it may supplant, some of it may not, then I say we just table this till the next meeting, and then we get a report that says exactly to this board how much of it's supplanting currently funded things and how much of it is new spending.
Let me give Dr. Locklear a chance to respond. I liked my original question.
You can borrow my cup if you'd like to.
How much of this has already been allocated? And how much is not, or do you know?
I'll let Tina respond to that specifically first. Tina, I believe there are some of these, like for literacy intervention, where we've already had to spend some money on it, because it's required by state law. So this is, some of these areas, we've already spending money on. And I'll let Tina respond to that first, but I have a little more I'd like to share, if that's okay. Ms. Edmonds?
Okay, so for '14, I'm gonna take them PRC by PRC. So for '14, for the career tech, that 189,000 is actually given to us for CTE credentials. And we have to spend it on CTE credentials.
Just one second, now let me ask. Have we already budgeted money from our general revenues for the CTE credentials? Do you understand where I'm trying to go?
There is no money budgeted for CTE.
Okay, so this is, this is new money. Okay, all right. Keep going, because that's what I'd like to know for each particular category.
Let me ask this. I mean, this is germane to this line, if we're gonna go line by line and discuss this, I'm perfectly okay with this. But I guess my question is, if we didn't budget for it, how do we plan on doing it this year? Were we just not gonna do it this year?
Okay, Dr. Locklear, did you want to, did you want to, did you want to say something, Dr. Locklear?
I mean, if it's an unbudgeted line item, how did we plan on doing it?
Let's give it over to Dr. Locklear.
We either wouldn't do it, or we'd find other funds to do it. But these, some of this is, like I said, is new funding, and some that we were counting on getting at least what we had last year. And based on what we knew was projected in the budget. The example being the school safety grant. We were at least counting on paying for our school resource officers that we were paying in the past from this school safety grant. We asked for an additional two officers to be supported through that, it's a two-to-one match. But we did get that approved. Also in that grant is school safety equipment that we had not necessarily knew whether or not we'd get funding for it and some training, like I said. So that's, so some of these things, if we wouldn't have got funding for, we wouldn't have been able to pay for it out of this. The two, for example, the two school resource officers, that was part of the resolution with our county commissioners, that they were gonna support as we expanded our police force.
So that begs a couple of questions. One is, I'm unfamiliar with a budget process where a governing board or a CEO or whoever approves a budget, thinking it's complete. But then, there's no footnote that says, oh, by the way, you just passed this budget, but, you know, we didn't fund CTE, we didn't fund our SROs. None of that was presented. We were presented, this board was presented and passed a budget resolution. And the assumption is, is that everything was fully funded to include our CTE credentials and our SROs. Now we're learning that that's not the case, that we were presented a budget. And my assumption, I think everyone else's assumption, was it was complete and everything was funded, and we were making trade-offs. I mean, we sit there and labored over the last $2 or $3 million, then we're learning, oh, well, wait a minute, that wasn't true. And this is what the public and the county commissioners have complained about over previous years, is that it's just more and more. And, oh, by the way, oh, gosh, we need this money, we need this money, and then we magically find that money. That's not a budget process, that's something else, but it's not a budget process. And the other point that I would make is, I should have jotted it down, because I don't recall. But anyway, that's just, that's just kind of an odd budget process.
Okay.
I probably didn't do a good job explaining that. But we don't go into a budget process not trying to be fully transparent, not trying to give the board all the information, and certainly will continue to try to do a better job. I probably didn't do a good job of explaining that. I don't know if there's anything else Ms. Edmonds would like to add. But throughout the year, we're gonna get allotment revisions from the state. And that's all part of our process, is to load that into our budget. We may get more money that we weren't expecting from a certain area. They may pull money from us, some of this is in the red, where we've had charter school pulls and different things like that. And this is all part of our process of bringing this to the board, updating that budget that's been loaded into our system that you've approved and getting your approval of those changes. So I apologize if I didn't explain that right, but I can assure you, we will always present budget information that is fully transparent, has all the information on the table. You have that commitment from me, so I apologize if I didn't explain that appropriately.
So let me go back, I remember the thing that I forgot. So first of all, one of the comments that was just made is out of this $618,000 for SROs, that that was to pay for equipment. But we just went to the county commissioners four months ago, and they agreed to fund all of the, the county commissioners agreed to fund all the SRO equipment needs and additional SROs. So I'm unclear as to why we went to the county commissioners and why they agreed to fund equipment needs. But now that we got this grant, we're saying that those equipment needs weren't funded, and we need that grant, when I would contend that we've now just double-funded that, and we go back to, we've paid for my soda twice. And the other thing, going back to the budget, again, my expectation, and we're certainly gonna do this in the future, is when a budget is presented, it is a complete budget. And if there are line items on there, such as four SROs that aren't funding, or an entire CTE credent, I mean, that's not a small thing, like, oh, wow, you know, we left off, you know, something minor. You know, what the central office, what the senior staff is expecting this board to take is that we reviewed a budget, not once, but twice. We even modified the budget two or three months ago. And not one time in that entire process did anyone say, oh, by the way, your SROs aren't funded, and your CTE program aren't funded. I just, I have a hard time believing that they weren't funded. I do.
All right, did you have something to say? Go ahead, Ms. Call.
Add a few things. So...
At some point, just before you do that, at some point, I'm gonna need a motion, either to accept the recommendation of the superintendent, or to accept it with a modification, or to table it, one of the three. But I'm gonna go ahead and give you the floor.
Okay, I was, mine's real quick anyhow, but, so the 618, it may look like we had that, but it... that, but it, we didn't have that, so it's not double-dipping on the sodas, is kind of what you were saying. I think it's probably miscommunicated somewhere wrong, maybe, you know, and I can see where your point is, is where you think, you know, you present this budget, and that's, you know, that was allocated for that. But the county commissioners also stated that, or the grant, I'm sorry, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, it's like, it's like a buy one, get one type thing, right? Where the grant said, if we were to, the county commissioners would give us.
We have to fund, no, no, I'm just clarifying. We have to fund some of the SROs out of pocket, and it's a two-for-one. We fund two, they fund one, so there's a test.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So I think that's kind of where, they're not fully funding that because of the grant that we have. And to me, I'm in support of your recommendation, because I feel that if you're saying that we need this, and you are our superintendent, we need to trust that you know our budget, you know, this is your job, this is not our job. We, our job is to rely on you for this, and I feel that if this is something that you are supporting, and you know what's, you know, allocated to each and every budget item, then, you know, I need to support that. And like you said, it is a working document, so you can, we can go back, and if there's, at the end of the year, if there's something that we can't use, or if we can put into a general fund, then that's great. But right now, from what you're stating, is that there's certain items on here that we cannot even touch, because it can't go into a general fund.
Okay. All right. So where does this leave us? Does someone wish to make a motion to either accept the recommendation of the superintendent on the, and amend the budget accordingly? Or B, to table it? Or C, to do something else?
It depends if Mr. Hensley, if he wanted to say yours again, or you wanted to table it.
So again, without the need of motion on the table, I just want to say, I am very, very, very concerned about a budget process, where a budget's presented to the board with the assumption of very valid consumption, the budget is complete, and everything's fully funded. My God, we were contemplating spending a million dollars renovating a locker room, while apparently the central office was withholding from us information that our CTE programs and our SROs weren't fully, weren't funded at all. And that's what I refuse to believe. I refuse to believe, I mean, either we have a very broken process, or there's something else going on here. Because again, we were debating trade-offs of funding that, you know, that I would have said, no, we're going to fund our CTE first, or we're going to fund our SROs. But now, in January, halfway through the budget cycle, we're led to believe that our SROs and our CTE were never funded, and that information was not presented to the board in either one of our budget reviews. I just have, I mean, that's either, again, that's hard to fathom.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to table this budget.
Is there a second to the motion to table?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion to table?
I would say one thing. I agree, I support the motion to table, and what I would like to see is, I want to separate fact from fiction. I mean, obviously, we just started discussing this this morning, there's two opposing viewpoints as to whether this was, whether these things were budgeted for or not. So I think we need to table this until we can get to the bottom of what exactly our budget process was. Were these very important items left out of the budget as it was presented to the board and never funded, or were they in fact just kind of thrown in there, knowing that there would be money? I just want to know what the breakdown in the process was.
Okay. So we have a motion to table, to the extent that the, that the motion succeeds, what I'm going to do is I'm going to refer it back to the Budget Committee, okay? For a report.
We'll be talking about this. So I guess before we.
For a report in February, which is what's probably going to happen.
So here's my question to Ms. Edmonds or the superintendent. Can this wait until February? Is it urgent?
Just can I ask?
Okay. This is, this is excellent work. Please, Ms. Edmonds, I mean, Ms. Edmonds has rejoined us after a stint away from Moore County Schools. This is, yeah, this is excellent work, the supporting documentation, this is very much just a procedural budgetary issue that I want to get to the bottom of. But the bottom line is, we have to start exercising fiscal discipline and fiscal restraint, because that cliff is like right here, and we need to start planning for that.
Okay. So is there any further discussion? Yes, sir.
It would be, since you don't have a motion, that, a main motion to even lay this on the, to have a motion to lay the other motion on the table, it'd be more appropriate to have a motion to postpone consideration of this item to a certain time, like next month's board meeting, for example.
Okay, well, the maker of the motion, which I believe.
Yes.
Just say so moved.
Whatever he just said.
The maker, the maker of the motion, the maker of the motion owns the motion, and the second does not necessarily have to agree. So, so I assume, Mr. Holmes, you are making the motion to do exactly what counsel has suggested. Okay. So the former, the motion to table is withdrawn, the new motion is made by Mr. Holmes. Is there a second to that motion?
And the new motion, to be specific, is to postpone consideration of this item to next month's board, regular board meeting.
Yes. Okay, so.
I'll second that.
Excuse me, could be the work session, to postpone consideration of this item to next month's work session.
Yeah. That is your motion, Mr. Holmes?
Sure.
Okay. That's the reason why we pay a lawyer. Okay. And I believe seconded by Ms. Caldwell, I think. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
She said aye.
Oh, excuse me, I, I'm sorry, who said, who said aye?
Pauline.
Pauline. Okay, Pauline.
I.
Pauline, are you opposed?
She said aye, we've got her.
Okay, so, so it is unanimous, am I correct, counsel?
Correct.
Okay, so, motion passes unanimously, and I'm going to also ask that the, that the Budget Committee take up the issues which are brought up here, and report back to us.
Next week, so.
Yes, so that's fine.
Yes, we do, yes, we do, Ms. Caldwell. It will be a busy committee.
Send your Starbucks, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I was at Union Pines for drama, and I didn't get a chance to sign up to speak, and I was wondering if I could do that.
Yes.
Okay, well, here's, here's what it is. We can amend the agenda by consent. We have a student here who wants to address us. I personally think it's a great idea, whatever student, student wants to say something, we should listen. So with that suggestion, is there any objection to hearing the student?
Only recommendation, why don't we wait and handle the last agenda item, and then she can speak after we handle our agenda items.
Okay, is that the consensus of the board?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So sit tight, and you'll, you're going to send us home with your pearls, what my professor used to say, with your pearls of wisdom, you will send us home. Okay. Now, our next agenda item is a resolution regarding TikTok and ByteDance. For the public to understand, there is a, I am making a motion to offer, which is in our amended agenda, and what I'm going to do is I am going to read from the resolved portion of the, of the motion. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, the whole thing is in our, is in our agenda. But basically, it asks to remove any, yes.
Mr. Baxter, can you pull up the motion?
The motion?
Yeah, and just scroll down to the three bullets at the bottom. Yes, sir, right there.
Okay.
Thank you.
And is that the, is that, is that the latest version of it, Mr. Baxter?
Can you go to the second page?
Okay. So to remove any.
That's the last version.
Yes, yes, thank you. To remove any and all programs and applications, popularly known as apps, entitled as or emanating from TikTok and ByteDance Limited. In fact, as a matter of fact, I'm just going to briefly go over each point, I'm not going to read the whole thing. To filter out TikTok and other ByteDance applications, number three, to avoid any requirement or suggestion that a student use or access TikTok or ByteDance Limited programs or applications, as mentioned, as a method of education or learning. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
The Chair, the motion should be to adopt the resolution as presented.
Then it will be so moved. Okay, is there a second to that, Mr. Holmes? Okay. So let me explain. We are, we are not here trying to say that, that students don't have the right to go on the apps that they want while they're outside of our, out of our purview, that is a matter between their parents and themselves. The United States Congress, the, and that, by the way, that includes former Speaker of the House Pelosi, as well as the executive portion of the federal government, as well as the entire Congress, through the reconciliation bill and the appropriations bill just passed, have eliminated TikTok from, from applications on government computers. TikTok is, and ByteDance are very closely associated with the government of China, as well as the Chinese Communist Party. We have a concern that such things are, are not secure for our students. We have concerns that our students' images are being digitized by foreign governments and are being utilized by foreign governments, that's not what we want to do. The resolution makes a determination that whatever educational advantages are to TikTok, they can be utilized in other ways and by other means. So I want to make sure that the public understands that this is not political, at least from my understanding. This is something that we're doing to try to protect our computer system, and to try to protect our students from the exploitation of their images. So with that, do we have any other comments? Yes.
I was just going to add too, that Dr. Locklear has already paused any communication for the students to get on TikTok already. So that happened, when did you do that, sir?
Our students have not been able to access TikTok or other social media during the, during the school day, that, they have not had access to that through our Moore County Schools network. But as of December 30th, made the decision, worked with Director Technology, Mr. Eklund, to also filter out that access to TikTok, to our staff as well, on the Moore County Schools network at home or at school. We've also went ahead and required our staff, if they have the app downloaded on a Moore County Schools device, to remove it and to no longer download it in the future.
Thank you.
So this resolution is in support, I should say, thank you, Ms. Caldwell. It's in support of the actions of the superintendent. I might add that those actions were taken at the behest of not just the superintendent, but myself and other members of the Board of Education. And I want to underline that this is a matter for student protection, and it is not, at least viewed by myself, and I would imagine the rest of the board, as a partisan or political idea, but as an, as an idea that is currently, shares widespread consensus in the federal government, and has also been passed, I believe, in the state of Virginia, and many, many other states have taken a similar action. So, so I'm sorry for the students who do enjoy TikTok. That doesn't mean they won't be able to do it, but they'll just not be able to do it at school, and when they do it, they'll have to do it as matters between themselves and their parents, and that's truly the way it should be. Anything else? Any other comments? Okay, yes, go ahead.
So, so as the Chair, Mr. Levy mentioned, the removal of access to TikTok is 100% about network security and student privacy. As a board, we need to be very, very cognizant of student privacy in this, in today's age, and I have other privacy concerns that, you know, we'll probably address in coming months. When Jared Levy first started talking about this, my mind went to other social media, like Facebook, Twitter, and whatnot, and we had a discussion of that. Well, let me, let me make these points. Social media in the academic environment, it's a distraction from academics. In many cases, it leads to disruptive behavior, students, you know, try to outdo each other and this and that. So my mind went to other social media, and I had planned on calling for blocking of other social media on our student network and guest network, and we had a discussion of that this morning with Mr. Eklund. And if I remember correctly, social media is never available on our, we have two networks, we'll call them our business network, that our faculty and staff and student MCS issued devices connect to. Then we have our guest network, which, which, you know, you and I would connect to, or personal devices connect to. And if I have this right, the, the guest network that we connect to, you can never access social media from that, correct? Regardless of who you are, board member down through student, correct? The business network, students, when they connect to it, they cannot access social media, with the exception of Sand Hill students who are attending, who are for whatever reason in Moore County Schools, is that correct? And then, and then faculty and staff and board members who are connected to our business network, we can access social media, correct? Okay, so the reason I say that is, I was.
Mr. Eklund is nodding his head to the.
Right, yeah, that's why I'm not, yes, I'm looking at Mr. Eklund, who's like confirming my recollection, because I didn't write it down. So the point of the matter is, is that students, 24 hours a day, students and guests can never use our, our guest network, can never be used to access social media 24 hours a day, and students, when they're connected to our business meeting, cannot access social media, correct? So we've effectively blocked students from social media 24 hours a day, correct? Okay, so achieve what I was going to propose as a modification of this, because we're already doing it. So thank you very much.
Okay. So is there anything further? Hearing nothing further, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Pauline, did you vote?
Pardon?
Pauline.
Oh, Pauline, I believe, I thought I heard Pauline say aye. Did you say aye, Pauline? Pauline, are you with us? Okay, so.
Yes, I said aye.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought. All right. So it's carried unanimously, yes.
So, Mr. Chair, I make a motion to open up the public comment speaking.
Yes.
Before we do that, you know, we discussed a limited, before, well, go ahead and make a.
Okay, well, it doesn't need to be a formal motion, is there any objection to hearing a comment of our student? Okay, please.
Well, I guess I was going to ask, is there anyone else that arrived late that did not have an opportunity to sign up? Okay, Ms. Peyton Wilson, you are on deck.
You want to go next? Okay.
If you could let our secretary, our secretary, let Cindy know your information, please.
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Peyton Wilson, I am 14, and I am a Union Pine student, and I recently just left Cranes Creek. I am a victim of being emotionally and mentally traumatized from that school. I have had many people come up to me and tell me to kill myself, and they would threaten to jump me, and would make fun of my weight and stuff, and my dad recently passed away two years ago, and they would tell me jokes about my dad, saying for me to go get a dad, and that I don't have one. saying for me to go get a dad and that I don't have one. And I have told Ms. Jones many times and she's done nothing for it. But my little brother, he is 11 and sixth grade. He has been very scared to come to school because of bullies and people would throw rocks at him and he is autistic. And he has let Ms. Jones know many, many times that these people have been doing stuff to him and she has not done anything. And I have talked to Mr. Locklear before and I appreciated him coming out when we had our first meeting. I'm sorry, I'm very nervous.
That's okay.
But I do not want to be scared of losing my little brother or having to worry about my little brother being jumped in the bathroom. My other brother, Carter Sabler, he is almost 13. His friend Malik got jumped during transition to lunch by three guys. And a teacher got pushed over during that fight trying to separate them. And I do not want any other kid to have to go through what I have went through or other people have went through. And I do not want my little brother to go through the bullying that I went through. And I would really appreciate it if you guys would do something about Ms. Jones. I am not trying to be disrespectful to you guys. I respect you very much and...
It's okay, it's all right. Take a breath. If you have to go a little over, that's okay too.
I'm sorry. This is very hard for me to talk about. I have, I wrote down a bunch of things that people have said to me on paper and I have those pictures if you guys would like me to show you to them, even though I know we can't do anything about me now. But it's an example of the teachers at Cranes Creek and Ms. Jones because she kind of picks people who she wants to defend and they are her little pets. She will do anything to protect them. And I have witnessed that before because I wasn't one of those people and my brother isn't either.
You are at Union Pines now?
I am in Union Pines and I am very glad that I am out of that school.
You're happy there?
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Thank you very much. It took a lot of courage and don't worry, you're not insulting us and we do encourage students, parents, teachers to all come to talk to us because we appreciate the information and we will listen and try to act. It might not be 100% the way you want, but we do listen and we do try to act accordingly. Okay, so...
The next speaker is Ms. Jody Wilson. I assume you're related? If not, I have some questions.
I'm very proud of her for standing up and speaking in front of you. It's intimidating as a 45-year-old, well, almost. My son is at Cranes Creek Middle School. He's autistic. I have been in contact with Dr. Locklear. I have been in contact with Ms. Jones. I've been in contact with Mr. Lee, Ms. Ashley Pachery, I don't know her name exactly. But I don't know, the contradictions that are happening at CCMS is a huge problem right now. The corruption and the covering up is a huge problem. When you guys go to visit, have you thought about maybe going to visit and not telling them? Because I have friends who work there and they put the troublemaker kids up away so that they don't, you don't see a lot of stuff that happens. I think you guys are being shielded. I think there's a lot of you that are totally noticeable of what's going on at CCMS. Three of those children that jumped that one boy last week, yeah, they, I think they're busted in from Southern Pines. The one boy that threw the rock at the back of my son was, my son was told by Ms. Pachery, I think, I don't even know if I'm saying her name right, but you guys know who I'm talking about. He was told that some people really care about their shoes and Paxton was upset because the entire class got in trouble for cutting up. And so he loves science, my son. I love him to death. He is a nerd. He does not fit in to everybody else's standards, so he is bullied constantly. So, he asked to be outside so that he can calm down. He does have a 504 plan that apparently nobody at Cranes Creek knows about. I encouraged an IEP plan. I was just informed that the IEP plan has to be in written form from when I requested it in October at a meeting with the administrators at Cranes Creek and I still haven't gotten anything. And I thought I was getting that on Thursday, but apparently I'm not getting it on Thursday, apparently I have to do it in writing. I'm just sick of the lies and the flip flops. I hope that you guys are aware that there is a petition going around of over 100 signatures that only started two days ago to remove Dr., no, Ms. Jones from her position. She is tainting the waters of our children. Their mental health is not good. My son got hit, that's what I was telling you. He went outside, he went to calm down. He was kicking, like going like this and for some reason his bully came out. I don't know how he got out because they CC'd all the teachers and informed him of this said bully. And apparently he accidentally went like this and dirt got on his shoes. And my son was told, some people value their shoes a lot more and that's why he hit you with the rock.
Justifying it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Anything further to come before the superintendent's report? Okay, hearing nothing, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. I just want to reiterate, we did have the opportunity to celebrate Mr. Kent Eklund. Earlier today, I did want to mention Mr. Eklund. Kent is our Director for Technology here in Moore County Schools. He has recently been chosen as the Sandhill's Technology Director of the Year for our region and will be competing at the state level to be recognized as the State Director for Technology of the Year. And certainly I can't think of a more deserving person than Kent. Congratulations, Kent, and look forward to seeing how you proceed through that process. We're proud of you and we're very fortunate to have you working in Moore County Schools. Thank you for your service. Also want to, we had the opportunity to also welcome Ms. Jenny Purvis, who participated in our work session this morning. Ms. Purvis, former principal, probably sounds weird to hear that, doesn't it Jenny? Former principal of Northmore High School for many, many years, did an incredible job there. But we're fortunate to have her stepping into a senior leadership role here in Moore County Schools as our Executive Officer for Operations. So I'm grateful for her stepping up and look forward to working with her in that role. So welcome, Ms. Purvis. Glad to have you. Also wanted to, again, just note, I'm grateful and appreciative of all our students who participated in a holiday card competition. That's a tradition we renewed this year, got back going again and man, it was awesome to see all of the cards that our students produced and the talent that we have in our students. So I just wanted to say thank you to them and congratulate them for their, for their winning the holiday card contest and I can't wait to see what we do next year. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over.
Okay, thank you very much. So for the good and welfare of the order, Mr. Benway, do you have something to tell us in closing?
Something to tell us?
Something does. I want to say again to Dr. McTapp and Dr. Scott, they hosted me in an overview briefing on the CTE and VoteTech program and we've got a significant program going on and we look to expand that and inform the public more of it too. There's a lot of things going on that the public needs to know about. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Caldwell.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bruno online, do you have something to say?
I thought this meeting was wonderful. I think that we showed the public that we're, our taxpayers, that we're very worried about their money. Discipline is foremost on my mind. I just don't believe that we could have education without discipline and this really has to be seriously looked into. Otherwise, thank you so much.
Thank you. And, Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, so Peyton, thank you so much for getting up to speak and that was really good. And to the mother, we have been, I've been going up to Cranes Creek unannounced. So I'm seeing some of the things that you're seeing. But I also want to say that there are some positive changes that are happening there. It's not going to happen overnight, but hang in there, it will get better. That's it.
Mr. Hensley?
Just two quick things. First is to dovetail off what Mr. Holmes said and I mentioned this earlier today. Rest assured that this board and this superintendent is laser focused and I don't use that word slightly, lightly, but we are decisively engaged. I've never seen this school board or the previous school board engage in anything more than trying to solve this, trying to restore discipline and safety in our schools. That is our number one priority. It is the superintendent's number one priority, among many, many other priorities. And, you know, you should have been seeing quick and decisive action being taken against perpetrators of violence and that, you know, we are committed to using the full spectrum of tools that we have available to us to do that. And that wasn't always the case in the past with Moore County Schools. So rest assured, this is our highest priority. The other thing I'd like to say is today is, as I mentioned at our moment of silence today, is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And I do want to say that, you know, send out my appreciation to our school resource officers and all the other men and women of law enforcement in Moore County who work tirelessly around the clock to keep us and our families safe. So sincere appreciation out to all of our law enforcement professionals and those who support them.
I thought you were going to say football.
Thank you. Let me also say that to everyone, what I'm very, very happy about is soon we're going to be going into various parts of the county and we're going to be having these business meetings in various parts of the county so that we can go to different schools, talk to all sorts of different people who may not be able to come down here to Carthage to talk to us. We're very, very, as a board, we are very, very interested in what everyone has to say. And, you know, you want to clap sometimes, you want to applaud sometimes, we'll listen to that. We're all about having some free speech and we are also all about listening to our constituencies. And I hope people will come down and talk to us and whether they have good things to say about us or bad things to say about us, we want to hear about it. Also, in terms of discipline, this board is taking a slightly different stance on discipline. We are taking it quite seriously. And we are taking a hard look at not just the large infractions, the ones that get on social media, but also some of the smaller infractions. So that the children who want to learn have the opportunity to learn. And those children who unfortunately, for one reason or another, do not want to learn can be persuaded to learn. But to make sure that those children who don't want to learn and who do want to disrupt do not interfere with the educational process of those children who do want to learn. So that is important and for us to also take a look at not just, because we are interested in making sure that students who have lost their way find their way because we believe that every student should have success, but never at the expense of a student as a victim. So where students are victimized by other students, we will be there and we will be considering that as well because it is important, when we talk about inclusion, to include all students. And sometimes, sometimes the better behaved students are not included and we sometimes give our attention to misbehaved students a little bit more than maybe we should. The goal should be to give our attention to all our students, to make sure that all of our students will learn. And finally, we want to say that our hearts and prayers are with Ms. Davis today because she has had a situation with her family and we want, without saying much about it, we hope everyone in her family as well and that she will return to us as soon as possible, but we do understand her absence. And thank everyone for participating in our school board meeting. Is there anything else to come before the board? Yes, that is true. So we will simply stand in recess, but we will not have any further business which will be conducted except to adjourn because we have to go back to close session. So thank everyone for being here. We are standing recess.
Mr. Chair, you need a motion to go. Purvis has stated on the agenda...
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.